Let's get back to the Quizlet, I have already made the fixes. Test. Start test. Record the transaction effects, purchase and receive supplies on February 3rd for 300 cash. So you will debit supplies 300 and credit cash 300. The transactions listed below are typical of those involving New Books Incorporated and Reader's Corner. New Books is a wholesale merchandiser and Reader's Corner is a retail merchandiser. Assume all sales of merchandise from New Books to Reader's Corner are made with terms N30, and the two companies use perpetual inventory systems, assuming the following transaction between the two companies occurred in the order listed during the year ended August 31st. Indicate the amount and direction of the effect, plus for increase, minus for decrease, and no effect for each transaction on the inventory balance of Reader's Corner. Just three days later, Reader's Corner paid New Books which settled all amounts owed. It's effect on... Because it's already paid... It doesn't matter if it's three days later, because it's already paid, there is no effect. Record the transaction effects, purchase supplies for $4,000 cash. Debit supplies $4,000, credit cash $4,000. Record the transaction effects, HGI also collected 250 cash from a high school for a tutoring session to be held in October. This will be deferred because it's already been collected but we haven't done the service yet. Therefore, we'll debit to cash 250 because we already have the cash, and we'll credit deferred revenue 250. Record the transaction effects, HGI determined that depreciation for September should be $100. Therefore, we debit depreciation expense 100, and we credit accumulated depreciation 100. Record the transaction effects, on February 9th repaired one of the computers for $120 cash. So that would be repairs and maintenance expense 120, that's the debit, and we credit cash 120. Foxy Raising had a system of internal control with the following procedures: Match the procedure to the corresponding internal control principle. Unused checks are stored in the vault. Unused checks are stored in the vault, that would be restrict access. Hold on. It could also be a procedure, because this is the procedure of what to do with the checks. Hmmmm... I'll go with the document procedures. Select whether the following items would be added or subtracted from the company's books or the bank statement side of the banker's delegation, deposit in transit of $2,300. So because the deposit is in transit, that means that the bank statement has to go up, because they're about to get $2,300. Record the transaction effect, recorded sales on February 7th totaling 1,800, 1,525 was cash and the rest on accounts receivable. That means we debit cash 1525, and we debit the difference, so 18 minus 15.25 is 2.75, or debit accounts receivable 275, and we'll credit sales revenue 1,800. Record the transaction effects, HGI provided 100 hours of regular hourly tutoring at a rate of $20 per hour, all of which was covered, collected in cash. So, for the sake of simplicity, 100 times 20 is 2,000. So we'll debit cash 2,000, credit service revenue 2,000. Select whether the following items would be added or subtracted from the company books or the bank statement side of a banker's delegation, outstanding checks of $12,000. Outstanding checks means that the bank... Give me a second. I'm getting messages. No, I thought I put myself on Do Not Disturb. Okay. I think... That I have finally, properly, put myself on Do Not Disturb. Now that we've succeeded, let's get back to work. Select whether the following items would be added or subtracted from the company's books or the bank statement side of a banker's delegation, outstanding checks of 200. So the outstanding check would be... A bank statement... Down? Yeah, bank statement down. For the following transactions, prepare journal entries needed to adjust the company books, deposit in transit of $2,300. In this instance, it's going to be... No journal entry required because it's already in transit. And besides... And besides, this is for the case, for the sake of the company book, we already put the check, it's already been reported. But in transit means it's gonna be for the bank. Foxy Raising has a system of internal control with the following procedures: Match the produce... The procedure to the corresponding internal control principle. The treasurer signs checks. The treasurer signs checks. Establish responsibility. Record the transaction effect, paid $2,400 in cash on February 2nd for three months rent for office space. That would be debit prepaid rent $2,400, credit cash $2,400. Record the transaction effect, sent promissory note on February 4th payable in two years, deposited $10,000 in the company bank account. So that would be debit cash $10,000 and credit note payable long term $10,000. Ooh, what did I get wrong? Okay, it's restrict access. Okay, so it is restrict access, I don't know why I thought it would be document procedures, let's try again. Trying again. Just three days later, Reader's Corner paid New Books which settled all amounts owed, so we need to prepare the journal entry. So its accounts payable: 536,500 and credit cash 536,500. Record the transaction effects, recorded sales on February 27th totaling 1,800, 1,525 was in cash, and the rest on accounts receivables, I mean debit to cash 1525, debit to accounts receivable 275, credit sales revenue 1,800. Prepare the journal entries that Amalgamated Textiles would record. Okay. Amalgamated sold merchandise to American Fashions at the selling price of $230,000, and the merchandise had costed Amalgamated $175,000. So we're going to debit accounts receivable $230,000, and we're going to credit sales revenue for $230,000. There should be an extra zero here, I don't know why there's only, uh... Four, three zeros, there should be a fourth zero. And we'll debit cost of goods sold $175,000, credit inventory $175,000. Prepare the journal entries that Amalgamated Textiles would record. Two days later, American Fashions returned goods that had been sold to the company at the price of $20,000, and complained to Amalgamated that some of the remaining merchandise differed from what American Fashions had ordered. Amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of $5,000 to American Fashions. The goods returned by American Fashions had costed Amalgamated $150... No, $15,270. Okay, so in this case, we are going to debit returns and allowances for $25,000, and we're going to credit accounts receivable for $25,000. Debit is inventory $15,270, and we'll credit the cost of goods sold $15,270. Really? Record the transaction effect, built in addition to the factory building for $41,000, paid $12,000 in cash and signed a three-year note for the balance. So we're going to debit the building $41,000, and we're going to credit cash, uh... $12,000, and the note payable, so credit the note payable will be $29,000. Transactions listed below are typical of those involving New Books Incorporated and Reader's Corner. New Books is a wholesale merchandiser and Reader's Corner is a retail merchandiser. Assume all sales of merchandise from New Books to Reader's Corner are made with terms N30, meaning we have 30 days to pay. And the two companies use perpetual inventory systems. Assume the following transactions between the two companies occurred in the order listed during the year ended August 31st. Indicate the amount and direction of the effect of each transaction for the inventory balance of Reader's Corner. New Books sold merchandise to Reader's Corner at the selling price of $550,000. The merchandise had costed $415,000 to New Books. In this instance, in this instance, it's going to have an effect on inventory balance plus... Plus... $550,000, and I'll tell you why. Because New Books is the selling price, and... New Books sold merchandise and the cost of New Books... Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Ahhh... Wait a minute. Oh, Reader's Corner spent that money, okay, on the inventory balance. So it would be this. Record the transaction effects, borrowed $50,000 cash from a local bank payable June 30th in two years. Okay, so we're going to debit cash $50,000 and credit note payable $50,000. Record the net sales in the summary of significant accounting policies that follows the Home Depot statement in cash flows. How does the company account for customer payments received in advance for providing merchandise or services? So you see, in this case, the revenue is deferred until the goods or services are provided to the customer. Record the transaction effects, purchase and receive supplies on February 3rd for $300 cash. That would mean that we debit supplies 300 and we credit cash 300. Record the transaction effects, issued an additional 2,000 shares of common stock for $20,000 cash. So we're going to debit cash $20,000 and we're going to credit common stock $20,000. Record the transaction effects, incurred and paid employee wages on February 28th of $420. So we're going to debit salaries and wage expense and credit cash for $420. Record the transaction effects, HGI has only $40 of supplies left at September 30th. Supplies started at $100, and what that means is that we debit the supplies expense for 60, and we credit supplies for 60, because 100 minus 40 equals 60. Record the transaction effects, paid $2,400 cash on February 2nd for three months rent office space. So it'd be debit prepaid rent $2,400 and credit cash $2,400. Record the transaction effects, on February 9th repaired one of the computers for $120 cash. So we're gonna debit the repairs and maintenance expense for $120 and credit cash $120. Record the transaction effects, on February 5th paid cash to buy equipment for $2,500 and land for $7,500. So we're going to debit equipment for $2,500, debit land for $7,500, and we're going to credit cash for the sum otherwise known as $10,000. Hundred percent, okay. Now let's do the fun stuff, and by the fun stuff, I mean we're gonna be doing the work. All of the homework problems in pretty much one goal, and then after all of the homework problems, we're going to do... Hmm, what's it called? All of the good stuff, you know? Not just all the homework problems, but also... All of the book problems as well, so that we can get excellent practice, excellent practice indeed. So let us begin by opening the homework, chapter 1 homework, if you have... Everything you need, that's great. There we go. So let's look at question 1. If this ever decides to open, thank you very much. And you're gonna notice that a lot of these questions are actually... Some of them we already covered, and then we're going to cover the rest of them afterwards. Okay. And then the question itself will be to prepare an income statement. Garmin Limited reported the following information for the six-month period ended June 29, 2019. Items are listed alphabetically and are in thousands of dollars. Accounts payable, accounts receivable, you can read. Prepare an income statement for the six months ended June 29, 2019. Okay, okay. So let's get to work. Will you read my... Thank you? There's a link. So first, we need to do it for Garmin Limited. And this is an income statement. And this is for... The... Six month... Ended... June... 29... 2019. And let's separate all the lines with red. In addition, this is going to be... Probably take two lines, so let's continue from here. And then, no... In thousands. Perfect. So when we make an income statement, we first start with revenues. And looking here at the notepad, we see... Our first revenue, and that is sales revenue. So we have sales revenue. And this is equal to... A hundred... No, my bad, 1,720,000 in thousands, so we actually should add more to it. Therefore, we'll have total revenue... Will be equal to... I know that this is taking a bit longer than I initially intended, but this is going to be everything we need. Good. And then after this, we need our expenses, because it's revenue minus expense. Okay. So let's separate it for the sake of making it easier to read. Expense. And for the expenses, let's look at our table here. So we have advertising expense. And the advertising expense is $69,000. Afterwards, the next expense... Is income tax expense. And the income tax expense is $78,000. And then afterwards, to keep going... We need to keep going with the more expenses. So the next expense after income tax expense is office expense. And the office expense is... $656,000. Okay, this is going very well. After the office expense, it'll be operating expense. And the operating expenses are $693,000. After the operating expense, that should be all of the expenses. So we're going to do total expense. And let me get my calculator out, because this is a very nasty calculation. My calculator tells me that the sum of this is equal to... Plus... 1... Million... Cool. Very cool. So now we need our net income. Net income. And our net income is going to be 100 and... 1,720,000 minus 1,496,000. So we'll take this. And we will get... And this is our net income. That is how you will make the balance sheet. Looking at the next question... Prepare... A statement of retained earnings for the six months ended June 29, 2019. Okay. So the best part about this is that this is actually really simple. So first, we need to keep net income as something we know, simply because it's... It's required for this answer, so we're only going to delete one side. It doesn't have to be perfect deletion, just enough that we can tell it's new stuff. New writing. And this is why we write fairly big, so that we can just drag the pen over, and it will erase everything. Cool. And so afterward, we need to write our statement of retained earnings. So, once again, it is... Once again, it is Garmin Limited. And it is a statement... Of retained earnings. For... Six months... Ended... June... 29, 2019. Pretty simple stuff so far. I like to think so anyways. And for this, it's probably going to be a lot shorter now, thankfully. So first, we need to get our retained earnings, and our retained earnings is $2,725,000. Retained earnings. And this is for Jan 1st... 2019. And this will be $2,275,000. Afterwards... We need to take our net income, and we need to choose, do we add or less, and it's add. Add net income. And the net income is going to be... Twenty... $224,000. Less... What are we lessing? When we... We would less dividends, obviously. And the dividends are $309,000, but because we're lessing them, it's going to be negative. Like so. Therefore... Now that we have this, we can do our calculations. Pretty nice, no? Now that we have all of this, we can get the calculation done. I thought it would only take one column, but I guess not, kinda sad. And the calculation will say... Retained... Earnings. And this will be for June... 29... 2019. And this number is going to be the sum of this. So let me get my calculator. The problem with using these kinds of calculators as opposed to say an Inspire, is that Inspire, you have more options, whereas with this, it's very basic calculator. Is that right? No, that's not right, that's not right, what am I doing wrong? 27... 25 plus... 224... Minus 309. This should give me... 200 and... And that is our retained earnings as of June 29, 2019. Very simple, but very fun. Now we go on to the next question. Okay. And this is what it says. And it's asking to prepare a balance sheet. Garmin Limited reported the following information for the six months period ended June 29, 2019. Items are listed alphabetically and are in thousands of dollars. Okay. Prepare a balance sheet for six months ended June 29, 2019. So for the sake of explaining how a balance sheet works, let's get to work. First of all... A balance sheet consists of company name... Say, balance sheet... Uh... At the month... And year. And then after this, we're going to list that it's in thousands. And what it has is the following table. It'll be asset. This will be liabilities. And then it'll be stock holders... Equity. And that's how you'll organize a balance sheet. So now let's do it for real. Pretty cool, okay, pretty basic, but at the same time, we want it to be basic so that we're not spending all of our time doing this, and we can use our time to do other things as well. So first, we write it as normal. Garmin... Limited. Then, this is our balance sheet. At... June 29, 2019. And this is in thousands. So let's... Write it like so. And then let's fill this thing up, shall we? Good. So first things first, we have assets. So what are our assets here? Well, we have cash. And cash here says... A hundred and... 1,600,000. So it'll be... Then we have accounts receivable. And the accounts receivable is going to say 584,000. Then we're going to have supplies. And supplies will be... 168,000. Then we will have equipment. And equipment is going to be 3,65,000. Afterwards... We keep going. After supplies, we have inventory. And our inventory is going to be 648,000. So now we need to take total assets. And our total assets are going to equal the sum of all these numbers. So using the calculator, we calculate that it is $5,525,000. So now we gotta do the other side, the liabilities. So first, for liabilities, what do we have here? So, and here, it's only two things. We have accounts payable. And this is going to be And then the other one is going to be notes payable. And the notes payable are Like so. So now we have to get total liabilities. And this is going to equal Oh, also, I messed up. Whoa. This should have another seven here. I misread. Yep, 1,27,700. Like so. And then we have to do the next part of our of our list. The stockholder equity. And this is going to take up the following. Common stock here for 1,510,000. And then the other one is going to be retained earnings. And retained earnings is going to be 2,725,000. And so with this, we have to get our total stockholder equity. And our total stockholder equity will equal, based on the calculator, 4,150,000 dollars. So if we take the sum of 4,150,000 and 1,375,000, it will equal 5,525,000. Therefore, uh, we have a balance. Very cool, guys, very cool. So, the next thing I wanna do is use the same information to do the same information. Now we're gonna use new data. We use this to prepare an income statement for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2021. Cheese Factory Incorporated reporting the following information in the fiscal year ended August 31, 2021. Therefore, we have more practice to look at. And of course, we set it up like we did before, so that it's even easier to keep going. And it's going to be, like before, Cheese Factory Incorporated. And this is their income statement. For year ended August 31, 2021. And with this now well-written, let's make this even easier to keep going. So first things first, we need revenues. And our revenues this time are going to be sales revenue. And our sales revenue is going to be equal to Therefore, we calculate total revenue. And it's going to equal pretty much the same thing. I know, so annoying readiness over and over again, but you have to do it, guys, okay? You have to do it, otherwise, you lose points. Up next, we go to expenses. And for expenses, we're going to have the following: salaries and wages expense. And this is going to equal 155,000. Then we have utilities expense. And these utilities expense is 530,000. Afterwards, we have to find more expenses. Another expense we have is office expense. Office expense. And this office expense is how much? Office expense is 95,000. Okay. That looks like a nine, let's fix it. There we go. Therefore, now that we have all this, we need to calculate total expense. And to calculate total expense, we just take the sum of these. So let me get my handy dandy calculator. And this gives me Cool. So now that we have this, we can calculate net income. And our net income is going to be 80,000 dollars. How did I get this number? Well, you see, I looked at my total revenue, and then subtracted it from my total expenses. Very simple. No further details needed. So now, let's make a bal, a statement of retained earnings for this company, okay? Let's make a statement of retained earnings. And for that, we're going to use only one side, because I don't think we need the other side. I think we can fit it this time. Now that I know how to write this thing properly. I think this will work. Okay. Remember, the number one way to study is to do and not, is to do more. Okay? Just keep doing things. Practice makes perfect. And if not perfect, because you're insignificant, then practice makes really, really good. I don't know why I laughed at that. Okay, okay, okay. So, the question now is, prepare a statement of retained earnings for the fiscal year ended August 31, 2021. Good. So now, let's do this. So once more, we are working for Cheese Factory. There's two Es in cheese. Cheese Factory Incorporated. And this is a statement of retained earnings. And this is for fiscal year not yar, year ended August 31, 2021. So let's get to work. So, first things first, we have our retained earnings. And our retained earnings in the question is here, 410,000 dollars. And then we have to add our net income. I apparently cannot write income, so I'll do it in print. And our net income here is 80,000 dollars. Then, we need to less by our dividends. So our dividends here are shown to be 10,000 dollars. Therefore, our, and this is at the beginning, now we have to do our retained earnings end. And our retained earnings end are going to be the sum of all of this. Therefore, we take our calculator, and we find that the answer is 480,000 dollars. And that's our statement of retained earnings. I could do another balance sheet, but the truth be told, I think I'm just gonna do these two, because these are the ones that the professor wants us to focus on more. And then I'll explain how the appendix ones work, just in case you really want to see the appendix. Yeah, let's do the appendix questions as well. Okay. So to do the appendix questions, you actually need additional information not currently provided, and I will not provide it, so I'll just read to you what you need to find. Answer the following questions by referring to the financial statements of the Home Depot in Appendix A at the end of this book. Note Fiscal 2019 for the Home Depot runs from February 4, 2019 to February 2, 2020. As with many retail companies, the Home Depot labels the first fiscal 2019, even though it ends in the 2020 calendar. The label Fiscal 2019 is appropriate because Fiscal 2019 includes 11 months from the 2019 calendar year. The Home Depot deposit explains its choice of fiscal period in Note 1 to its financial statements. Now that you know that, let's begin with question one. What amount of net income was reported in millions for the year ended Feb Bruery 2, 2020? So to do this one, we have to check. So thankfully, something that you'll discover is that net income can also be recorded as net earnings. Now that we know that net income can equal net earnings, we just look at our the Home Depot Inc. It'll be a the consolidated statement of earnings. And we'll find that net earnings is equal to 11,242 dollars. That's how you'll do A. The next question is, what amount of sales revenue in millions was earned for the year ended Feb Bruery 2, 2020? Okay. So, to find this, to find this, we just need to find sales revenue. And sales revenue will be discoverable at net sales. And the net sales give us 110,225 dollars. And remember, this is recorded in thousands. You can also find this on the Home Depot Consolidated Statement of Earnings. Next, we must look for the following question. What was the cost in millions to the company's inventory on Feb Bruery 2, 2020? So to find the cost to the company's inventory, you can find it at the Home Depot Inc. Balance Sheet. And for the cost in millions, this will be the Merchan Dice Inventory, which will be equal to 14,531 dollars. And then finally, we're going to have how much cash in millions does the Home Depot have on Feb Bruery 2, 2020? So, how much does it have by then? Well, let's see. To find this, we need to look at the same, the same balance sheet, but we're gonna be checking cash and cash equivalent. Cash and cash equivalents will tell us that it is two thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars in the thousands. I mean, in the millions, congratulations. We're making a lot of money at Home Depot Incorporated. So that was chapter one. Crazy, I know. So now let's do chapter two. Once more, we're doing all the problems, so let's have fun here. What does chapter two say for us? Whoa, this is a big question. Ag Biotech, A B T, was organized on January first by four friends. Each organizer invested ten thousand dollars in the company and in turn was issued eight thousand shares of common stock to date. There are only five shareholder, stockholders. During the first month, January, the company had the following five elements. I, I think I'm gonna separate them to make them more palatable on the eyes. Okay. So an acre, stoker. Collected a total of forty thousand dollars from the organizer and in turn issued common stock. Purchased a building for so-and-so, equipment for so-and-so, and three acres of land for so-and-so, paid so-and-so in cash and signed a note of the other balance, which is due to be paid in fifteen years. One stockholder recorded the company had five hundred shares of his A B T stock and had been sold and transferred to another stockholder for five thousand cash. Purchased supplies for three thousand cash, sold one acre of land for six thousand cash to another company. So now we have that, let's do the, the five questions here. During the first month, the record for the company, of the company were inadequate. You were asked to prepare a summary of the preceding transactions to develop a quick assessment of their economic effects on A B T. Complete spreadsheet that follows. Transaction A is shown as an example. Okay, so to explain how this question works, because this question is a bit of a doozy. Okay, it's not a bit, it is, it is a doozy, completely. We have to fill in this following spreadsheet, so I'm gonna have to write this moderately tiny, so beginning bow, thence, this will be for A, B, C, D, E, and then end balance. And from here, it's going to go in the red for the sake of keeping things simple and organized. Whoa. That there penmanship, guys. This penmanship is next level. Okay, good enough. And it will be for the following. And the following are cash, supplies, land, building, equipment. And these are the assets. And assets equal liabilities. And liabilities consist of notes payable plus stockholders equity. And stockholders equity here is going to be common stock. And it's going to be retained earnings. And to separate them, we're going to use this nice bright blue color. So let's write it out. Okay, this is how we're going to separate it with some dotted lines. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not using chalk, so don't expect the straightest lines, just expect a good attempt at straight lines. Like so. There's my attempt at straight lines, guys. Okay. Now that we have that, let's do some math. So for the sake of showing off how it works for beginning balance, since we're not using any past data here, and we're starting from A, we know that our beginning balance for all of them are zero. Like that. And then for A, we look at it, and it says collected a total of forty thousand from organizer and in turn issued common stock. So that would mean that our cash went up by forty thousand. Let's also add a nice blue line here. Forty thousand. And uncommon stock was also issued for forty thousand. Then we go to B, where we purchased a building for sixty-five thousand dollars. So building for six for sixty-five thousand dollars. And we purchased equipment for sixteen thousand dollars. So we take the sum of that and three acres of land, so land for eighteen thousand. So this is what we've paid for so far, eighteen thousand, sixty-five thousand, and sixteen thousand. And that's what, that's what we purchased. We then paid thirteen hundred in cash. And because it's a payment, it's negative, so parentheses. And we signed a notes payable for the difference. And if you take your calculator and add these up, so sixteen plus eighteen plus sixty-five, and then subtract this one thirteen, you will get your notes payable at eighty-six thousand dollars. Because nothing else gets filled, nothing else is needed. I mean, if I really wanted to, I could just show them off. No, I'll show them off just to explain what it is. So if they're not being filled up, just so you know, you just write a bunch of zeros. It, it really is that simple. I mean, it looks kinda weird, but you can. And then sim- same goes for here. Two zeros to fill it up. So now we go to C. And C says, one stockholder reported to the company that five hundred of his shares, A B T stock, had been sold and transferred to another shareholder for five thousand cash. So this sounds like we'd be recording something, but in reality, we're not recording anything. And the reason we don't record anything is simple. That's just some schmuck. We are A B T. That's just some schmuck with our shares, so we don't care. So now let's go to D. Purchased supplies for three thousand cash. Okay, that's perfect. This is an easy one to fulfill. So supplies is going to be three thousand, and we lost three thousand, meaning that it's perfectly balanced as all things should be. Zero, 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 zero. Moving on to E. It says sold one acre of land for six thousand cash to another company. Okay, so we just made six K. And we lost some land. Good. And the best part is, because we don't have to do anything else, is zero, 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 zero. So hilariously enough, for retained earnings, we didn't retain anything, so we go zero. For common stock, we s- we kept forty K as our ending balance. For notes payable, it's going to be eighty-six K. For equipment, it's going to be sixteen K. Building is going to be sixty-five K. Land is going to be twelve K. Because eighteen minus six equals twelve. Then for supplies, we bought three K of supplies, and then for assets, it's going to be uh, sixteen, thirty K. And that is how you will do part two. And that is the, during the first month, recorded inadequate, so we were asked to complete the spreadsheet. So now that we have completed the spreadsheet, this one is done. So now we have to do number four. Based on the completed spreadsheet, compute total assets, total liabilities, total stockholder equity, cash balance, and total current assets at the end of the month. Sure, sure, that's fine. So it's asking for, I'm gonna keep this on screen so that's easier. It's asking for total assets, total liabilities, total stockholder equity, total balance. This is for the end of the month. And then it's going to be total balance in cash. So it's actually a total cash balance. And then finally, it's going to ask for total current assets. So let's get to work, shall we? We know that total assets is just the sum of assets, so we'll take the sum of these. And this will give us a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So pretty much, we took the sum of this thirty K, three K, twelve K, sixty-five K, and sixteen K. For total liabilities, it just comes here, notes payable, eighty-six thousand dollars. For total stockholder equity, it's going to be forty thousand dollars. Total cash balance, well, we have cash here, it's thirty thousand. And then for total current assets, we're going to take cash and supplies, because I think these are the current assets. Now I think cash and supplies are the current assets, and this will be thirty-three thousand dollars. And that's how you will do B. So to do C, as of January thirty-first, as the financing of A B T's investment in assets primarily come for liabilities or stockholder equity? Well, as you can see, liabilities here is eighty-six K. Okay? Meanwhile, stockholder equity, forty plus zero is still forty. Eighty-six is greater than forty. Therefore, majority from liabilities. And that's how you'll do it. Now we have the next question. Once more, we're gonna do some fun stuff, but this is pretty much how we do it. Let's do it again, but with a different set of numbers now. Oops. How do I remove this? I'm gonna figure that out later. Performance Plastics Company, P P C, have been operating for three years. The beginning account balances are, you can read that. During the year, the fo- company had the following summarized activities, we're going to go over that. So let's do the question. Analyze transactions A through F to determine their effects on the accounting equation. So once more, we know that the accounting equation is assets equals liabilities plus stockholders equity. That's a, that is not how you spell equity. Plus stockholders equity. There we go, that's how you spell it. So assets is comprised of cash, supplies, buildings, and equipment. And this will be equal to liabilities, notes payable. Let me write that correctly. Notes payable. Able. And then the stockholder equity will be common stock and retained earnings. So then, how many do we have? We have A through F, so A, B, C, D, E, F. So let's get to work. First, we separate these once again to make it even easier. And the notes payable, common stock, and retained earnings. Okay. So let us begin with this one. Cash for A. So we purchased the equipment that cost this much in, that's the equipment, for paid five K cash and signed a two-year note for the balance. Okay. So first things first, let's set up this graph again. Let's edit it up properly so that we don't lose all this time. Because the sad truth about this is that most of the time you're gonna spend is probably going to be graphing, not graphing, writing down the damn balance sheet. Or in this case, your spreadsheet for the accounting equation. This is pretty much an expanded accounting equation, just on steroids. So we know that our equipment that we purchased is twenty-one thousand. And then we also know that we paid five K cash. And then we signed the notes payable, twenty-one minus five is sixteen K. Then we move on to B. Let's separate these once again for simplicity's sake. Okay. Purchased equipment, issued an additional two thousand dollar, two thousand shares of common stock for twenty thousand cash. So in this case, we did twenty thousand for common stock. Twenty thousand. Then we have borrowed fifty thousand cash from local bank payable June thirtieth in two years. So in other words, fifty thousand cash, notes payable, fifty thousand. We borrowed, where did that? We purchased supplies, add four thousand cash, okay? So supplies went to four thousand, and in exchange, we lost four thousand cash. Then we built in addition to the factory building for forty-one K and paid twelve thousand in cash and signed a three-year note. So building is going to be forty-one K. We paid twelve thousand, which is going to be negative. And then we signed the notes payable with the difference, which is twenty-nine K. And then we signed the notes payable with the difference, which is twenty-nine K. And then F, higher than new, but notice how it says for the next year, so that means F is a big fat N, A. So now let's get ending balances together. The ending balances are going to be the following. Seventy K minus this is going to be forty-nine K, four K, forty-one K. And this one here is going to be twenty-one K. Here is going to be ninety-five K, plus twenty K, and zero. So those are your ending balances, and now the transaction analysis is done. But what about the next section? We have to, and I repeat, we have to do the most painful part and record the transaction effects determined part one using journal entries. So at the very least, we now have all of this information. So print screen, take a picture of it, whatever, three, two, one. Let's begin the most brutal part. Actually recording this damn stuff. What the hell? Scroll down. So for the sake of simplicity, we're gonna have debit and credit here. So first things first, purchased equipment that cost twenty-one K, paid five K cash on two-year note payable balance. So we're going to debit equipment for twenty-one thousand, and we're going to credit cash for five thousand. And then notes payable will be sixteen thousand. Pretty basic, super sincere, but we got this, okay? We got this. So then we go to B. B will be issued additional two K shares of common stock for twenty thousand cash. So it's going to be debit cash for twenty K. And then common stock credit for twenty K. And then for three, it's going to be borrowed five K cash from local bank payable June thirtieth in two years. Okay? So the cash we borrowed, we've still got cash. And that's a debit for fifty K. And we have a notes payable for fifty K. Good job, me, good job. Then, purchase supplies for four K cash. So supplies is going to be four K. And cash is going to be credited for four K. Then, the cycle continues. Built in addition to the factory buildings for forty-one K, paid twelve K in cash and signed three-year note for balance, okay? So in other words, debit to increase buildings, credit cash, and credit notes payable. Excuse me? Buildings are going to get are going to be worth forty-one K. And cash was twelve K. So taking the difference, it's going to be twenty-nine K. Ta-da! So now let's keep going. Obviously, we must keep going. So we hired the new president to start the next year, we not worry about that. So that's, those are our, those are our journal entries for this question. Pretty cool, I think. I think this is pretty cool. Um, I'm not gonna use T accounts because truth be told, that, the T accounts are gonna take like an hour. And I don't think we're gonna do that on the exam. But for the sake of practice, let's do a classified balance sheet. Okay? Therefore, the question, prepare a classified balance sheet at December thirty-first. Is going to be a valid question. So let's do this. Therefore, how do we start this? Well, it begins like this. First, we divide the paper, the page in half. I'm trying to do a straight line. So we have as much space as possible, good enough. Let's start naming things. Four months. Plastics company. And this will be a balance sheet. And this is at December thirty-first. And the way I like to do this, and the way most books will do it, is they'll divide it like so with some line. And we'll begin. Assets are gonna be, it's online. And then over here is going to be liabilities. So first things first, we have current assets, which is also, again, it's online. And then from here, we can start separating these line to make it even easier on us. And for current assets, we're going to have, looking at the table really quickly. Over here, we have cash, inventory, supplies, and accounts receivable. Cash, supplies, inventory, and accounts receivable. Which I'm going to record as A slash R for the time being, cuz that saves so much space. And cash, if we look at it, is at eighty-four. Now, if, for those of you who don't know, I'm using the values from the balance sheet to do this, as opposed to what appears in the beginning account balances. No, no, I'm not using beginning account balances. I'm using the ending account balances, see now? You get the ending account balances from doing the T accounts. So with the T, just, just assume I did the T accounts, so the numbers that I write down won't match up with the actual balance sheet. But just to let you know, they are from the tip account, the T accounts. Maybe I'll do an entire video dedicated to T accounts in the future. But for now, I'm just doing this to save everyone time. So it's going to be cash is eighty-four thousand, supplies are ninety thousand, inventory is forty thousand. And my accounts receivable are going to be five thousand. And that's going to count as my total current assets. So total current assets. And this will be the sum of this, which is in turn, which in turn is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. But now that we have this sum, which we taken from here, we need to keep going with equipment and notes receivable. And what else do I need to? I need building. And I need land. You get those from here. And then pretend I did the T chart. I have the T chart open, which is why I'm doing it, like, just completely wrong. Equipment will be a hundred and one thousand. Our notes receivable will be two thousand. Our buildings are going to be a hundred and sixty-one thousand. And our land is going to be thirty thousand. So let's connect all the lines now. For the sake of making this look much better. Ah, can I finally fit it on one page? Maybe. Who knows at this point? But I hope I can. Because otherwise, this is going to look pretty freaking ugly. Okay? So now that we have that, we can calculate for total assets. And this is going to be four hundred and thirty-two thousand. Cool. So thankfully, I now know I can calculate this quite effortlessly. So now let's go to liabilities, which is going to be current liabilities. And from here, we get the red line like before, and just go all the way down. Very, very nice. So our current liabilities involve accounts payable. And the accounts payable is going to be thirty-seven thousand. So our total current liabilities is going to be thirty-seven thousand. And that is going to be our total. So then we move on to more liabilities such as notes payable, which is going to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Therefore, we can now calculate our total liability. And our total liabilities will be two hundred and twelve thousand. With this now calculated, oops. That wasn't supposed to happen. With this now calculated, we can begin, we can continue on with what we were calculating earlier. And that would be our stockholders equity. Stockholders equity. So our stockholder equity will include the common stock. And it will include retained earnings. Our common stock will be a hundred and seventy thousand, and our retained earnings is going to be fifty thousand. Therefore, air total stockholders equity is going to equal to the sum of this, otherwise known as twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Therefore, total L plus S E. So liabilities plus stockholder equity is going to be this number, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand plus two-hundred-and-twelve thousand, otherwise known as four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. And that is how you're going to make your balance sheet. Glorious, simply glorious. And it asks us if it comes primarily from liabilities or stockholder equity. Our stockholders equity is two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, our liabilities is two-hundred-and-twelve. So in this case, it is primarily from stockholders equity. Very cool. Very cool. So now we do the next homework assignment. The problem with doing the, look at the book questions, is that I can't show you the book because that would infringe on copyright, and I'm not about to get sued by that company. So what I can do is do this, obviously, write it out by hand, which is why you'll see me do this stuff by hand. So now let's look at some chapter three material. For fun, you know? Okay? Whoa. The following transactions are February activities for Swing Hard Incorporated when offering golf lessons in the northeastern United States. And these are the lessons, of course. We'll go over each of them, so don't worry about me reading these out loud, we'll read them eventually. Required: Prepare an income statement for Swing Hard Incorporated and then company's net profit margin expressed as a percentage. Okay, okay. So first, we gotta read all of this. Swing Hard collected a hundred and fif, has collected fifteen thousand from customers. Swing Hard sold gift cards for golf lessons at a hundred and fifty cash in February. Swing Hard received four thousand from credit sales made to customers in January. Swing Hard collected two hundred, two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty in advance payments for golf lessons to start in June. Swing Hard billed a customer a hundred and twenty-five dollars for services provided between February twenty-fifth and February twenty-eighth. Bill is to be paid in March. Swing Hard paid four thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty wages to its golf instructors for the month of February. Swing Hard paid a hun, one thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty for electricity bill used in the month of January. And Swing Hard received an electricity bill for eight hundred dollars in the month of February to be paid in March. So now that we have this information, okay, you're gonna look at this, because I'm just gonna do this in one go. Ready, go. Swing Hard Incorporated. Income statement. Four month ended February twenty-eight. So when we have an income statement, we begin with revenues. And if we look here, what does it say are the revenues? Well, we have service revenue. And the service revenue is going to be, let's see. The service revenue is going to be the collected fifteen thousand plus the a hundred and twenty-five dollar bill, which is going to be equal to fifteen-one-two-five. So service revenue, which in turn will look like the following. Scroll down. We are recording. Service revenue is going to be fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So our total revenue is just this number by itself. Fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty-five. And then after our total revenues, when we do the income statement, we need to have the expenses. And these expenses will include, take a look at this question for a second. We have salaries and wages, we have utilities expense. We have salaries and wages, we have utilities expense. And utilities expense. And the salaries and wages expense is going to be four thousand seven hundred and fifty. And the utilities expense is going to be one thousand seven fifty plus eight hundred plus... Where's the rest? This is a utility, this is a utility. Where's the rest of the utilities? Cause this is only two thousand five hundred and fifty. What am I missing? Where's the rest of it? Trying to think. Utilities expense. Oh, oh, my bad, so our utilities is eight hundred dollars? I apparently failed to draw at a dollar sign. And what this means is we add this. And this is going to be our total expenses. And this is going to be our five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And we have this, our net income is going to be fifteen-one-two-five minus fifteen-five-zero. And that is going to equal, say it with me, guys, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's where you'll get this from, that's our net income. So now that we've done this, we've, we found a way to make income statements extremely easy, so it's revenues minus expenses, that's all it is, that's all it will be. That's how we get our net income. Therefore, we are saving ourselves a lot of time now that we know all this material much more quickly. So what's next? Ooh, Barbara Jones, I think we did this question already. But we did it in the previous video, so it's good to do it again. "Barbara Jones opened Barb's Books Business on February 1st. You have been hired to maintain the company's financial records. The following transaction occurred in February, the first month of operations. You received shareholders' cash contributions on February 1st totaling net number from corporation issued ten K shares of common stock." Okay, you know what we're doing, I'll tell you what we're doing, we're going to record journal entries. Okay? So, so let's do this, let, let's record the journal entries, so we have debit and credit. And the same will go for the other side when we get to it eventually. So let's begin. Okay? "Received shareholders' cash contributions on February 1st totaling sixteen thousand to from the corporation issued a thousand shares of stock and stock." Okay, so we are going to debit cash for sixteen thousand. And we're going to credit common stock for sixteen thousand. Next one, we read. "Paid two thousand four hundred cash for three months' rent of office space." So we have debit prepaid rent for two thousand four hundred cash. And we have cash being two thousand four hundred. "Purchased and received supplies on February" third for three hundred cash, so we are going to debit to increase supplies. And credit cash for three hundred. Then we look at the next one. "Signed promissory note February 4th payable in two years, deposited ten K in the company's bank accounts." So this is a promissory note, so that's a notes payable, I believe. Okay, so to do this, we have to do cash. I don't know what causes that, but let's do that again. Promissory note, paid ten K, okay, so we're going to debit for cash and credit a notes payable. Cash will be ten thousand dollars and the notes payable will be ten thousand dollars. Up next. "February 5th paid cash for equipment two thousand five hundred, land seven thousand five hundred." Okay, so we're going to debit credit. Debit, um, equipment. We're going to debit land. And then we're going to credit cash. So the equipment is two thousand five hundred. The land is seven thousand five hundred. So the cash will be the sum of this, meaning ten thousand. Very simple, very fun. Afterwards, we have advertisement in a local newspaper, February 6th, four hundred and twenty-five cash. So in other words, we're going to debit advertisement expense for four hundred and twenty-five. And we're going to credit cash for four hundred and twenty-five. We then move on. "Recorded sales of February 7 totaling eighteen hundred." Uh, fifteen-twenty-five was in cash, rest on accounts receivable, so we're going to debit cash and debit accounts receivable. And then what we have here is our sales revenue. Sales revenue is eighteen hundred, cash is going to be fifteen-twenty-five. And if that is the case, then the difference between these two is how much the accounts receivable are. Two hundred and seventy-five. So what's next? We have a lot of these to go over, don't we? We do. The next one is going to be receivable fifty dollars from consumer on February 8th. So in other words, uh... I think it's, uh, accounts receivable versus accounts payable? Fifty, fifty. Hold on. Something tells me this one isn't right, let me check my notes. It's cash and accounts receivable, okay. I thought so, so it'll be, uh, debit to increase cash and we are going to credit accounts receivable. Congratulations, we're going even further beyond than I expected. So I'm going to assume you all have this memorized, so we can move on on the next side. Yep, tomorrow's the midterm, guys, tomorrow is definitely the midterm. And it will be on February 9th, you repaired one of the computers for a hundred and twenty cash. So we're going to debit credit. And it will be repair expense for debit and we're going to credit cash. And the expense is going to be hundred and twenty. Cash's credit will be a hundred and twenty. Oh wait, no, not a hundred, what am I talking about? Not a hundred, that's the wrong number. Computers for a hundred and twenty? Oh no, it is a hundred and twenty, I, I thought, I thought I was missing out. I guess I just misremembered. And then finally, incurred and paid employee wages on February 28th of four twenty. So in other words, it'll be wage expense. And the bottom will be cash, four twenty, four twenty. That's how you'll do that. Good. And that is how you will do the journal entries for all of these. The next, the next section of the question asks you to do the T accounts. Once more, that's just gonna take forever. So I'm going to skip this section and pretend you have the answers in front of you. Hmm... I guess I don't actually need this one section. Okay, so the, the next section asks us to do, you know, unadjusted trial balances and T accounts, but the professor said it's not gonna be in the exam because this kind of stuff is the kind of, uh, con- is the kind of material that takes hours and hours, so let's not do that. Now we move on to chapter four. Alright. So let me just look at chapter four stuff, just to make sure. Okay, we got balance sheets, good. Okay, chapter four is going to be easy peasy lemon squeezy, guys, okay? Very, very easy stuff. So let's do this work. Copy. And this asks us to prepare the following. Yay! Oh my goodness, this is another one of those questions that just takes forever and I can already feel it. I can feel it in my mind, okay? My actual mind feels it. I'm separating all of these so that it's easier to have them looked differently. So what it's asking us to do is prepare the following journal entries. Oh my goodness, we have so many journal entries, I think there's ten of them? Okay, read all of these, okay? We're gonna prepare the journal entries, read these journal entries, okay? Take a screenshot, however you're gonna record them, let's begin. Eraser ink. And for the sake of simplicity, I'm actually going to have this set in three different columns cause that's how much space we need. Okay. "Step one, HTI provided a hundred hours of regular hourly tutoring at a rate of twenty dollars an hour, all of which is collected in cash." Okay, so the way that'll work is we're going to debit on the left and credit on the right. Debit, credit, debit, credit. So let's get to work. So, let's read that again. Hundred hours tutoring, so that is, uh, service revenue. So it's going to be debit to increase cash for a hundred times twenty, so two thousand. And then service revenue. Credit service revenue for two thousand. Okay. Then we keep going. "HTI paid tutors at the hourly rate of the hundred, of ten an hour, September 28th. HTI paid for ninety hours tutoring time and promised to pay the remaining hours worked. Total hours expense in B should match total hour revenue in A." So revenue will be a hundred hours, just so you guys know. So they paid ten dollars for ninety hours. So in other words, it'll be wages and salaries expense. And it'll be ninety dollars? Nine hundred? No, that's wrong, that's definitely wrong. Salaries and wages expense should be a thousand. And the way we know this is because cash will be nine hundred and credit wages payable. That'll also be one hundred, that's what's missing. That's how much wages we can pay left. So then the next one will be another basic one. Let me just check that one, yeah, wages payable, okay, 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 okay. "HTI hosted an all-night review session on September twenty-nine for people cramming for midterm exams at a special price of ten dollars per attendee. Rather than collect cash at the time of the review session, HTI will send bills in October to the seventy-five people who attended the review session." So first we know that ten times seventy-five is seven hundred money. So in other words, it'll be debit for accounts receivable for seven hundred and fifty. And then bottom will be service revenue for seven hundred and fifty. Not seven fifty-six, seven hundred and fifty. Yes, okay. Now we have to look at the next one. "At the beginning of the night-long review session, HTI paid two hundred cash to its tutors for wages." Okay. So wages expense and then cash be two hundred, two hundred. So we'll debit for wages, we'll debit wages expense two hundred and credit cash two hundred. Very easy way of writing it, okay? Let's do this extremely well. The next one is going to be HTI collected two hundred cash on account from students who received tutoring during the summer. So because they already received the tutoring, that's service revenue. So in other words, it'll be accounts receivable and service revenue. Wait. Collected two hundred cash on account from students who received tutoring during the summer, so that'll be two hundred and two hundred. That one I'm not too sure on. It's cash. Wait, 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 really? Hold on, let, let me reread this one, because apparently I'm lost here. It's cash two hundred. And the f- and the accounts receivable. Why? Collected two hundred cash on account. Oh, so that's already receivable. Okay. And we collected this in cash. Okay, 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 okay. That, that makes sense now. Now I get it. Okay. So what's the next one? HTI collected two fifty cash from high school for tutoring session to be held in October. So, that is collected cash. And then debit for cash, credit deferred. Revenue. And it's going to be how much? Two fifty? Yeah, two fifty. Up next. We keep going, guys. Okay, we never stop. It's going to be HT determined depreciation for September should be a hundred, so depreciation. So we're going to debit. Depreciation expense. And that's going to be a hundred. And then this will be. Depreciation accumulated? I think so. Oh no, I messed that up. Oh no. Give me a second, I messed up my screen. Fixed. So this is wrong. What was the exact one? So for, let me read it again. Determined depreciation for September should be a hundred dollars. Okay. So. Debit for depreciation. Expense. And then the other one will be accumulated depreciation. And then these numbers will be. A hundred dollars. HTI adjusted its accounts on August thirty-first and not yet paid forty dollar monthly interest owed. Okay, on a promissory note. Okay, no, two, three years. Sure, 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 sure. So in other words, we're going to debit. Interest expense. And we're going to credit interest payable. And it will be for forty dollars. I'm pretty sure that's correct. It is. Moving on to the next one. Income tax approximately, oh my bad. Uh, HTI has only forty dollar supplies left at September thirtieth. So this one requires you to think ahead. So we start with a hundred in supplies. A hundred minus forty equals to sixty. Therefore. Depreciation. Expense. No, 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 that's wrong. Supplies expense, there we go. Versus, uh, supplies. Will be sixty dollars. And sixty dollars. Not sixty-six, sixty. Yes. And then finally. We have the famous H. Whoa, not this, don't open that. HTI journal entries, alright. It shares income taxes are approximately thirty percent of income before tax. So let's think about this for a second. So to do this one. And we have to do some summations here. So first we have to add all the revenue. And it's going to be. Plus two thousand. Plus seven fifty. Two seven five zero. And then the other one will be expense. And expenses are going to be. One thousand. Plus. Two hundred. Plus. A hundred. Plus forty. Plus sixty. And that will equal. I think I missed something. Did I miss one? Two hundred, two hundred and fifty. I think I missed something. Cause this will only equal. Fourteen hundred. Okay. Twenty-seven fifty minus fourteen hundred is equal to zero five three one. So what this tells me. Is that. Cause what we're looking for is income tax deductible. So that. Is our income before taxes. So how much are being taxed? This is zero point three, zero point three is thirty percent. So it'll be five. One, zero. One, four. One, one. So it'll be four hundred and five dollars. Now that we have four hundred and five, let's continue to work. So. Income taxes, so. Income tax. Expense, we're debiting this for four hundred and five. And then income tax payable. Will equal four hundred and five. And then for confirmation, this is debit. And this is credit. Took forever, but we finally got it. That is how you'll do this section of the question. Pretty basic, pretty basic, but better to learn all the basics so that when we get to the complex stuff, it's not too bad. Moving on to the following, we need to go to. The next part of the question. Which is going to be prepare an income statement and a statement of retained earnings. So pretend you have a print screen of this, or you took notes, or you took great notes. But just pretend you did. So it's asking us for the following. You stop doing that. Prepare HTI's income statement for the month ended September thirty. And prepare HTI's statement of retained earnings. For the month ended Sep-thirty. Okay, so we know how an income statement works at this point. So it's a H. HTI. Inc. So be the income statement. And this is for month. Ended. September thirtieth. And this is going to be for twenty nineteen, just so you guys know. So when we do the income statement, we start with revenue. And in the case of this question here, what is the revenue? So revenue will include. Service revenue, that's too high actually. What am I looking for? Where's service revenue? Alright, to do this one, hilariously enough. You actually still need the information from the previous one. So I'm going to have to have something open. But effectively, the, the revenues will include service revenue. Which we calculated earlier. As being. Two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Then our total revenue. Will be equal to two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Then afterwards, we have expenses. So these expenses include salaries. And wage. Expense. It includes depreciation expense. It includes supplies expense. It includes interest expense. And it includes income. Tax expense. And we, we already calculated all of these manually, so let's just do it. It'll be twelve hundred. For salary, that was bad. That was a really bad way of writing that. Let's write this cleaner. Let's write this to be cleaner so that it's easier to read, easier on the eyes too. So our salaries and wages expense is going to be twelve hundred dollars. Our depreciation expense is going to be a hundred dollars as calculated earlier. Our supply expense is going to be sixty. Our interest expense is going to be forty. And our income tax expense is going to be four hundred and five. So in other words, total. Expense. Will be equal to. The sum of all of this, which is eighteen oh five. And then our net income. Will be calculated in the following way. Net income will be service rev. Minus total expense. And that will equal to nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Very good. And that's how you'll make your income statement. And then to conclude with our statement of retained earnings. We'll use a yellow to separate it. It'll be once more House of Tutors Inc. Uh, HTI's Inc. And it'll be the statement. Of retained earnings. And then it'll be four month. Ended. September. Thirty. So now let's do this, it'll be retained earnings. And our retained earnings are. Eight hundred and twenty. Then we add. Our net income. Which is going to be nine hundred and forty-five. We subtract our dividends. And that's going to be. Zero, cause we don't have dividends. So our retained earnings ending, so retained earnings beginning. And then retained. Earning. Ending. Is going to equal eight hundred and twenty plus nine hundred and forty-five. Or one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. And that's how you'll do that question. Pretty basic. Uh, I don't think I'm gonna do the balance sheet again, because I don't think the balance sheet is on the exam, simply because it takes too long. And now we go to chapter five. Cool stuff, guys, very cool stuff. Chapter five is a bunch of Quizlet stuff, so we'll do that afterwards. Actually, actually, you know what? I'm gonna make a Quizlet just specifically for chapter five in front of you guys. Just so you guys know. But besides that. We have to do some journal entries, guys. We have to do some more journal entries. Okay? So you see, we're like, we're like Sio here, okay? We got teardrops in our eyes because we have to do journal entries. Okay. So what are we doing for the journal entries? And don't give me anything, she's the one who killed Sato. It wasn't Asahi. And I just realized, nobody is gonna get that joke. And I'm not talking about the beer brand. Sorry, I'm, I'm showing my age yet again, for no discernible reason. But that's besides the point. So moving on. Follow the fo- did I really do that? Okay. Follow the following transactions, prepare journal entries needed to adjust company books if no entries required for transaction event, so like no journal entry required in the first account field. Outstanding checks of twelve thousand dollars. So remember, we're from the perspective of company books, from. Company. Books. So we look at A, outstanding checks. No, sure, no entry needed. B, what do we have for B? B will be bank service charge of fifteen dollars. Okay, then. So it'll be a. Debit. Bank service. Charge. And credit cash. And it'll be fifteen dollars. C is, what does C say? Uh, C is deposit in transit, so it's already been recorded, no sure, no. Entry needed. And then D is going to be interest earned the five dollars, so cash. Interest receivable, I mean revenue. Not real interest revenue. It'll be five dollars and five dollars. There. That's another set of journal. That's another set of journal entries. Do you guys see what this exam is, guys? This exam is journal entries, holy crud. Oh my goodness, this is gonna be a pain. And now. We make a specific Quizlet. For my own sanity. So X. Plus folder, not folder. Plus study set. This is going to be. Internal controls and plus comma minus. So to explain what we're doing here, we're gonna be doing some more awesome studying methods. Copy, one, two, three. Four. Five. Okay, this is stuff you gotta practice on all the time, you don't wanna mess this up. Otherwise, you're going to cry. Okay, the exam. Is. Seven questions. Meaning these seven questions are probably gonna be the hardest things ever. I remember when I took the AP Calc exam during two thousand and twenty, meaning it was only two questions and it was brutally hard. Oh, I got a two on that thing, but you know what? A two is passing, so I don't care. Okay, it made, it let me skip a bunch of classes in college. Which is nice. And this, the reason I'm just making idle small chat is because the real. The real difficulty comes from what comes next. And that is actually writing the stuff. Copy, there's six, one, two, three, four, five, six. I know, I know, it seems ridiculous at this point how much I'm just. Going off of brute instinct, but this pretty much is par for the course, this is what happens. Okay. The, the end-all be-all is going to just be getting everything done. And once everything is done, we'll be able to move on with our lives, continue studying, continue learning. Warehouse activities are electronically. Okay. What happened? Are electronically monitored. Restrict access. Yeah, okay. Oops. I caught my mistake. Office employees. Sorry, this is established responsibility. You see that? This is why you gotta pay attention to what you do, otherwise you just mess up. You don't wanna mess up like this, this is bad. Office employees. As well as warehouse employees, area duties. I'm gonna kill my neck here, I'm not even kidding. Restrict access. If you know, I've been going long enough, I'm gonna turn my desk into a standing desk again. Actually, can I? I can't use the standing desk function when I'm using headphones, that kinda sucks. Or can I? I probably can, but not for very long. Let's see here, how high can I actually go? About there. Okay, so now that I can stand up again. Whoa, I gotta move closer then, okay. I can stand up and this is doing some horrible, horrible damage to my headset. Let's use a restricted access. This is a pain in my neck. And I'm not saying this to complain, I'm saying this as in, I can, I literally have to twist my neck to even copy and paste this stuff. Which is not good in the long run. But you know what? That's just how it is, right? Sometimes it just goes like that. And use this time to look at the material. Try to answer faster than me and you should be getting a good mark. If you can't answer faster than me, then sorry. The best way I can say you do that is to pause it. Try to answer and then see what I answer, and even then, don't accept it as right, right away, because even I'm still. Going through this, remember, these aren't tutorials necessarily, this is the study session. You get to watch me learn something. Because learning is a good thing. Oh, right. Come on. Okay. Minus. Company books. Host bank statement. Plus company books. Okay, great, let's study this thing really quickly. It's fine. My library folders. Plus. Okay. Let's try to test these out. Zero with definitions, start test. Foxer raising system has a guy, company checks are pre-numbered, that's a document procedure. Treasure signs checks, that's established responsibility. Merchandise orders are recorded on public purchase form, this is document procedure. Wait, that could, that could be something else. Merchandise form. Are recorded on a public archery form. No, this is document procedure, okay, 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 okay. Goods are received only by warehouse employees, that's a secret duties. Uh treasurer's not allowed to make bank deposits, that's a secret duties. Deposit in transit two hundred and three, two thousand three hundred. That will be a. A plus for bank books, bank statements. Because the company books are already recorded, so it's pretty much, if deposits in transit and the, and the bank can only go up, right? No, 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 the bank will go down. Thinking, thinking, thinking. I think an outstanding check will make the bank go up. So, no, 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 outstanding check, outstanding check. But if a deposit is in transit, this applies bank statement, okay? Because the bank is only making money afterwards. Receiving reports are completed to indicate goods received. That would be independently verify. Wait a minute, receiving reports are completed to indicate goods received? Um. That's a good question. What is it? Receiving reports are completed to indicate goods received, that's a document procedure. Warehouse is locked, activities are electronically monitored, that's a restricted access. Bank service charge of fifteen dollars, that's company books minus fifteen. Select the internal control principle represented by each point in the following diagram. One office employee places on merchandise orders, that is um the established responsibility. Select whether the following items would be added or subtracted from the company's books or the bank statement. Interest earned, so that's company books plus. Select whether the following items would be added or subtracted from the company books or the bank statement side of a bank reconciliation. Outstanding checks of twelve thousand dollars. Okay, so in, in this instance, that would be. Outstanding check, that'd be bank down. Foxer raising has a system of internal control with the following procedures. Match the procedure to the corresponding internal control principle, unused checks are stored in the vault. That's going to be a document procedure, I think. Is it a document procedure? No, it's a restricted access. Goods billed by supplier are compared to purchases orders and receiving reports before being paid. Okay, so goods billed by suppliers are compared to purchase orders and receiving reports before being paid. That's going to be. Goods billed by supplier compared to purchase, that sounds like independent verify. Let me just uh check that. Yeah, it's independent verify. Bank reconciliation is prepared each month. Hmm, bank reconciliation is prepared each month, that's going to be independently verified? Hundred percent, okay, let's do that, let's do that one more time. I think I can do it faster and more effectively. Goods are received only by warehouse employees. Secret duties. Goods billed by suppliers are compared to purchase orders independently verify. I just did this. It would be independently verify, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Deposit in transit, that means bank up. Office employee places merchandise orders, that is established responsibility. Bank reconciliation paired each month, that is a document procedure. Is it a document procedure? Uh, no, it's independently verif- why is that independently verify? I don't get this one, why is this one independently verify? I don't get it. Company checks are pre-numbered, that's document procedure. Receiving reports are completed to indicate goods received. Receiving reports are completed to indicate goods received, that's going to be document procedure. No, 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 that's not what's gonna happen, it's gonna, no, it is a document procedure, okay. Outstanding checks of twelve thousand dollars, so that would be bank down. Unused checks are stored in the vault, restricted access. Treasurer signs checks, that's established responsibility. Bank service charge of fifteen dollars, that's company books down. Enters earned, company books up. Merchandise orders are recorded on a purchase order form. This would be a procedure. Merchandise orders are recorded on the merchandise order form, a document procedure. Warehouse is locked and activities are electronically monitored. Restricted access. Treasurer not allowed to make bank deposits, secret duties. Woo-hoo, one more time. Warehouse is locked and activities are electronically monitored, restricted access. Company checks are pre-numbered, uh document procedures. Uh indicate goods received, receiving reports are completed to indicate, that is a document procedure. Yep. Bank service charge, so that would be the company books down. Interest earned, company books up. Goods received only by warehouse employees, that's going to be a. Goods received only, that's the secret duties. Unused checks are stored in the vault, restricted access. Oh, my bad. Treasurer is not allowed to make bank deposits, that's going to be a secret duty. Merchandise orders are recorded in a purchase order form. Merchandise orders are recorded in a purchase order form. That's going to be an independent, no, it's a document procedure, document procedure. Goods being, by suppliers are prepared to purchase orders and compared before being paid. That's going to be independent verify. Banking reconciliation is prepared each month, that's gonna be independent verify for some reason. Office employee places on merchandise orders, established responsibility. Outstanding checks, twelve thousand, that's bank down. Deposit in transit, that's bank up. Treasurer signs checks. Treasurer signs checks is going to be a case of established responsibility. Okay, we'll go back to this one in a bit, but I think we're getting this. Okay. So now let's go to chapter six. The good stuff, chapter six is the good one. Oh, yes, it's chapter six. How I miss you, chapter six. Let me just look at it, okay. So we're gonna be doing four of these. Okay. I know it seems like I'm really quiet for a lot of this, but the truth is that, that pretty much is how it goes at this point. We don't really have that much loudness here. So. For those of you who watched the previous one. You'll know this question fairly well. The transactions listed below are typical of those involving amalgamated textiles and American fashion, amalgamated is a wholesale merchandiser and American fashion is a retail merchandiser. Assume also some merchandise and amalgamated to American fashions are made with the same, the terms sixty days to pay. And the two companies are used perpetual inventory systems, assuming the following transactions between the two companies occurred in this order listed during the year ended December thirty-first. Amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashions at a selling price of two hundred and thirty thousand. Merchandise had costed amalgamated a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two days later, American fashions returned goods that have been sold to the companies at a price of twenty thousand dollars. And complained to amalgamated that some of the remaining purchase. Some of the remaining merchandise differed from what American fashions had ordered, amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five thousand dollars to American fashions. The goods returned by American fashions had costed amalgamated fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy. No further returns are expected, just three days later, American fashions paid amalgamated which settled all amounts owed. For each of the events A through C, indicate the amount and direction to the effects of amalgamated textiles in terms of the following items. Okay. So what exactly is this asking us to do, you're probably wondering? Well, you see, it's this. It's this thing. First, let's separate this into ABC for simplicity. What'll happen? Oh shit. No, 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 no. Uh what did I do? What the hell did I do? No, it's on. Uh, no idea what happened. Let's enter this again. That, this is A. This is B. And this is C. Good to know. So. The way it'll work is we have a transaction. For A, B, and C. Then we'll have sales. Revenue. Then we'll have sales returns. Then we're gonna have sales allowance. Then we're going to have net sales. Then we're going to have cost of goods sold. And then we're gonna have gross profit. Okay. Okay. I know, absolutely crazy, but that's just how this goes. And then, of course. We gotta separate these. So that there is no confusion as to what goes where. Good. We're gonna write it all in pink. A, amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashion at the selling price of two hundred and thirty. Thousand dollars, the merchandise had costed amalgamated seventeen fifty, okay, okay, okay. So sales revenue. Will equal to two hundred and fifty thousand. Net sales was also going to equal two hundred and fifty thousand. Cost of goods sold will be seventeen. Hundred and seventy-five K. So then gross profit is going to be net sales minus cost of goods sold. And that's going to equal. Why did I put two fifty, my bad, my bad, it should be a three. Two hundred and thirty K. This will give us fifty-five K. Good enough. Now we move on to B. American fashions returned goods that have been sold to the company at the price of two hundred. I mean, of twenty K and complained that amalgamated. Merchandise differed from what American fashions had ordered. Amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five K. So in other words, our returns are going to be twenty K. Uh, sales allowance will be five K. So then our net sales is going to be a negative because they. We just got this money, so now we're giving it back. So it's gonna be twenty-five K. Cost of goods sold is going to be fifteen two seven five. I stayed in the problem, so when we do gross profit. Leave two five. So, two fifty. We'll get. Negative nine hundred and seventy-three thousand. And then C doesn't have anything to fill in. So now we have to prepare the journal entries. For A, B, and C. So let's separate this page here. What the hell? Hold on, that was a bad line. What's causing that? Oh, it's not, it's not centered. Okay. Now it's centered. Okay, we gotta prepare the journal entries. So for A. We have quite a few journal entries. Um. I think this is the one that's accounts receivable for some reason. Could be cash. No, no, it's accounts receivable for this one, because we're, everything's on account. But no, this will be two hundred and thirty. Okay, two hundred and thirty K. So you know what? For the sake of simplicity, we're just gonna make this a line. That. Says debit and credit. So then from here, we also have. Our. Cost of goods sold. Over inventory. And this will be a hundred and seventy-five K. One seven five K. Okay. So that's A. Now we gotta go to B. Just three is, oh, wait, B is, uh. Had sole company of twenty thousand complained that amalgamated some of the remaining merchandise differed. Amalgamated agreed to give five K of American fashions get returned. Okay, so it's going to be. Return on allowance expense. Over accounts. Payable? No, it's not. Inventory. So. We get inventory. But inventory is an asset, which is something you'll get up. Hold on. Thinking about how to write this. So we debit inventory. Cause we get it back. And then this will be. Return. And allowance. Expense. That can't be right. I knew it wasn't right. I just checked. And I was, I was completely wrong for this one. So in reality, we're debiting sales. Return. And allowance. And what we're getting here. Is. Accounts. Payable? No, accounts receivable. And this is gonna be twenty-five thousand. And this will be twenty-five thousand. But we're not done yet. We also have cost of goods sold. So it'll be inventory up. And cost of goods sold down, so inventory will be fifteen two seven zero. This will be fifteen two seven zero. And now we gotta go to C. Just three days later, American fashions paid amalgamated, all of which settle accounts owed. So in other words. It'll be inventory. Credit, I mean debit inventory for two hundred and five K. Credit accounts. Receivable. For two oh five K. Why is inventory wrong? Inventory is wrong because it's not actually inventory. We're debiting cash. So that means that eventually, when we go back for the final section of this review. I'm going to be. Checking this section again, because this section. Keeps messing with me, genuinely. So if it says that the three days later paid amalgamated all settled amounts owed, it'll be cash two oh five. Credit amount, account receivable. I think that makes sense. But I don't understand why everything else would be accounts and then suddenly cash shows up. Ah, that's, um. I guess it's because everything becomes cash after a while. You know, everything finished leaving the accounts and you just make it into cash to the bank. I'm trying to think of why, though. Why is that the case? I. Need to keep thinking. Okay. While I think about this for a second. Let's move on. I'm going to assume you have this written down by now. Indicate the amount and direction of the effect. Of each transaction in the inventory balance for Reader's Corner. So this clears the same data. So we're gonna be doing this for. Transaction. A, B, C. And it'll be effects. On inventory. Balance. So transaction A. Is, uh, we're selling goods. And we're making revenue, so plus. B is returns minus, and C has no effect because it's already been done. Meaning that C will be a good zero. And then plus here. Comes from the. I think I might be using a different. No. No, no. I realize what happened. We have a different set of words here. It's that new book stuff. Yeah, new books. So we need to use these information here. To solve it. New book sold merchandise to Reader's Corner at selling price, there it is. Two days later, Reader's Corner complained to the new books that some of the merchandise differed from what Reader's Corner had ordered, so that's a return. And three years later, everything is settled, so that's no effect because everything has already been paid. So in the case of A, we're just doing this from the perspective. And we are, in, in the context of the story. Um. Inventory balance. For. Reader's. Corner. So since we're the inventory balance Reader's Corner, we don't care about how much it costs new books, meaning that. A is gonna be fifty fi- five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Very simple, very good, very fun. And then B. Three days later, Reader's Corner paid new books which settled all amounts owed, and that's, let's see. B is the two days later. They gave an allowance of ten K and that's from new books. Uh, give an allowance to Reader's Corner, so we get the allowance. We, uh, Reader's Corner also returned some books, not counting that. And then sold to Reader's Corner for three five zero zero. So given that it's three five zero zero and ten K. Which is what happened to new, which is what new books did to Reader's Corner. It's hundred. And thirty-five K. I hope that made sense, I really do. Now, let's record the journal entries because. It's good practice and recording journal entries is genuinely starting to become really fun. So journal entry one for this one. It's going to be sold merchandise to Reader's Corner, but we are doing the. Hold on. So we are Reader's Corner. Since we're Reader's Corner on journal entry. We have to do this in order, so number one. So transaction A is going to be the following. Given that we're Reader's Corner here, we only care about the value that money goes for Reader's Corner, so that's gonna be. Selling price of five hundred and fifty K. So. Debit inventory. For five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're crediting cash because we're losing the cash for. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For B. Two days later, Reader's Corner complained that the new books or some of the merchandise differed from what Reader's Corner had ordered. New books agreed to give an allowance of ten K to Reader's Corner. Reader's Corner also returned some books, which had cost new books two thousand. And sold to Reader's Corner for three thousand five hundred. So in other words, we got money, baby. That means that we had. Accounts. Payable. So debit for accounts payable, credit inventory. So our accounts payable is going to be ten thousand plus three thousand five hundred. For thirteen thousand five hundred. And then our inventory is going to be credited for thirteen thousand five hundred. And that's how we'll do that one for B. Now we gotta look at C. Which is that three days later, Reader's Corner paid new books which settle all amounts owed. So we're looking at our. At our inventory here. So it'll be five five zero comma zero 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 minus one three five. Zero zero. And this number, when you take it, is going to be five hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred. And this is where we're gonna get. C's journal entry. It's going to be C for accounts payable. That's our debit, and then we're crediting cash. And the number that we're using is the one we just calculated, so we debit. Five hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred, and we're going to credit. Five thousand. Three, uh, five hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred cash. And that's how we'll do the journal entries. Good. Okay, I just wanna see one more time. The journal entries for. So, the transactions of amalgamated textiles. Because all of this stuff makes sense. When you think about it, but the amalgamated textile one, I'm still genuinely curious as to how that one works. So let's try it again and see if I pick something up. Okay, so the three of these are amalgamated textiles sold merchandise. To American fashion selling price of two three zero merchandise cost amalgamated a hundred and seventy-five K. But you see, you see, this is why I don't get, why, why is it accounts here? But at the very end, we get to see it's cash. I guess it's because it's all settled. Uh huh. Okay. So, so let's, let's think about this one logically here. So for the journal entry, it's going to be. Amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashion selling at price of, okay. So, so this tells me that it's an accounts receivable. And then the other one is going to be. Inventory. And this accounts receivable is going to be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the inventory is gonna be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then for the next one, it's going to be. Cost of goods sold and accounts receivable. No, not accounts receivable, cost of goods sold over inventory. No. No, 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 no. See, this, this is already wrong, okay? This is already wrong. I'm trying to figure out how this one works in reality. Okay, reading it again. Amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashion selling price of two hundred and thirty thousand. So in other words, we have an accounts receivable, okay, that's two hundred and thirty thousand. But if that's the case, then what do we have here? We have a selling revenue. Okay. But then we are gonna B here, and B will be the cost of goods sold. Not God sold, goods sold. And then here will be inventory. This will be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This will be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's correct, but why is that correct? Because whenever we do a sale like this, it requires two journal entries. Yes. Because this is the adj- this is the journal entries. For amalgamated textiles, so we are amalgamated textiles in this one, that's what's going on. Now we look at B. So B says what exactly? Two days later, American fashions returned goods that had been sold to the company at a price of twenty thousand dollars to complain to amalgamated that some of the remaining merchandise differed from what American fashions had ordered. Amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five thousand dollars to American fashions. Goods returned by American fashions had costed amalgamated fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, no further returns are expected. Okay. Okay. So, in this case. in this case, what we're doing amalgamated returned the goods that had been sold to the company. And and if that's the case, then it would be return and allowance would be equal to 25 25,000 dollars. And what they would, what we would get back would be accounts receivable. Because we got our inventory back. That doesn't make sense. What am I doing wrong? Okay. So in, in this case, sales return. And what this would do is let me credit my accounts receivable for 25,000 dollars. And then here, we get inventory back at the exchange of cost of goods sold. So our inventory is 15270. So our cost of goods sold was 15270 because we got our, we got our goods back. And we no longer have to worry about the cost anymore. So that's correct. Okay? Okay. So far, so good. And then, and then C. C will require knowledge of this number. Not that number. C will require knowledge of this number and this number. Sales revenue. The famous sales revenue. So we look at the sales revenue for C. So I'm just gonna write over it for the sake of simplicity. Sales revenue. What we're doing is we're having cash. And that will be a debit for twen, 200,000, 205,000. And it'll be accounts receivable for credit 205,000. Okay. So that's how you'll do that one. I think that makes more sense now. That just took a, a little longer than I anticipated. And that's all the questions that we have. Or so I thought. But there is one question from the textbook that I wanna look at. So let's look at the textbook really quickly. And it's the journal entry question. Okay? Because something tells me this is gonna be on the test. Yep. It tells me it's gonna be on the test. So so, so, so. Let me get my notebook out. Because this is one that I'm going to have my note open for because genuinely it, it makes less sense than I thought it did. Okay. So for this one, this one involves Nicole's Getaway Spa. So this is gonna have us look at August 2nd. So looking at August 2nd and August 10th. Because this one is a case of, we went over this, but not really. So August 2nd says the following. Nicole's mean August 2nd sold a bundle of spa services with a merchandise basket when sold separately. The spa service part of the bundle sells for 400 dollars and the merchandise basket normally sells for 100 dollars. Together together the bundle was sold to Val Amy for cash at a selling price of 450 dollars total. Val booked a spa treatment for August 10th. And she took the basket of goods with her. The goods had cost Nicole's Getaway Spa 80 dollars. The other one you have to look at is the August 10th one. So Val Amy used one of the three spa treatments she had purchased as part of the bundle sold to her on August 2nd. So the way this works is originally there was a mistake that was caught really early on. And the way this mistakes works is that intentionally, when this was read, I figured that it was just going to be 400 plus 100 equals to 500. But that's wrong. What it really is, we're looking at price of the bundle. Why are we looking at price of the bundle? Because that's 450 dollars. So now, we need to realize a percentage here. This is what we're getting at. The percentage of 500. 400 is 80% of 500. And 100 is 20% of 500. Keep this number memorized, okay? Now that we know how this works, we have to look at the basket of goods. Therefore, we have to look at the following. Cash in 450 times 0.8 is going to be 360. And 450 times 0.8 is going to, 0.2 is going to equal 90. Okay? That means that when we look at the state, the journal entry, so we will debit cash 450 and credit revenue and credit deferred revenue. That's going to equal 360, I mean, the credit revenue will be 90 and the deferred revenue is going to be 360. 90 plus 360 equals 450. Therefore, this, this matches out. But then we also have the second entry. The second entry is going to be cost of goods sold. And the cost of goods sold is going to be 80 because the goods had cost NGS 80 dollars. That's in the question itself. So what did we lose for cause of goods sold? Inventory. Went down 80. And that's the journal entry for August 2nd. But now we're gonna do the journal entry for August 10th. So the journal entry for August 10th says Val Amy used one of three spa treatments she had purchased as a part of the bundle to her sold on August 2nd. There we go. So one of three. What does one of three mean? One of three means one of three means 30%, okay? So in this case, we're going to be looking at the deferred revenue. Good. Total 450. So why are we looking at the deferred revenue? Because that is the the spa service part of the bundle, the 400. That's where this, that's where the whole percentage thing comes from. That's where we get these numbers. So in reality, it's going to be 360 because that's where this comes from. This is the spa purchase and since we're using one of the three spa treatments that she had purchased, we're gonna divide this by three and this is going to equal 120. Good. This is in deferred revenue. Why is it in deferred revenue? Either way. What this means is that for journal entry on August 10th, we're going to debit deferred revenue. And it's going to equal 120. And we're going to credit service revenue. And it's going to equal 120. And that is a question that wasn't on the quote unquote homework, but it was the part of the project and I figured I mean, I, I make, I wanna make sure that y'all get that right. So I put it there. Now, that should be everything that's going to be covered on the exam to my knowledge. Therefore, I wanna thank you for watching and I hope you enjoyed.